All right, it's August nineteenth, twenty twenty five, seven thirty P. M. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the town of Willing and planning a zoning permission order. Members present myself, Bob Shavitt, Andy Marco, Beckusynowski, Joe Hall, Bill Benel, and Michael Johansson, and all of them will be seated for Doug Roberts. And I see applications per receipt. Item one, PZ dash twenty-five dash seven, text amendment application to section five one oh four to include multi-family dwellings as a permitted use in the signed commercial zone applicant Christian Vega, that application was withdrawn on the fourteenth. No public hearings tonight. Item E, new business, item one, discussion of draft economic development strategic plan to include the economic development commission.
Do this. Oh, great to the point, no other business? Okay, great, thank you very much. I'm Matt Clark. I'm in.
Yankee's play seven thirty.
I'm Matt Clark, I'm the interim chairman of the Economic Commission, I've been on the commission for about three years. Last year, we engaged a consultant to develop a strategic plan for economic development in Wellington. And that was paid for with ARBA funds. The goal of the economic goal and commission through Wellington is to promote reasonable and growth in our commercial business tax base that is both appropriate for Wellington, appropriate scale, and will and appropriate character, and it will hopefully diversify our tax base a little bit and our tax base slightly. Key considerations here are appropriate for our town. So the we've done various things throughout the three years that I've been on the commission. So one of the things that we wanted to try and do was develop a formal process for, promoting the development of, of, you know, commercial business in Wellington. It's not so much, it's both, we want to serve the people who are here as well, but we also want to kind of be able to reach out. And one of the ways we do that is make it as easy as possible, as smooth as possible for capital to move into our town in a, in a way and an approach that's both responsible and respects the rural character of our town and, and stuff that our citizenry will support. So Bill Rankin and I will be presenting tonight, and Mike's gonna chime in as well. So the, the plan that we, that we put together will serve as a blueprint for moving forward and achieving diversification of our portfolio, commercial portfolio in town. The projects will generate new fiscal revenues, and we want to support new business development and enhance the quality of, of life for our, for our residents and our citizens. Stop me anytime, stop us anytime to ask questions and stuff like that. We, this has been a year-long process. We developed ten different market sectors, and we selected five of those that we thought were appropriate and where we would focus, we're a very small group, all volunteers, and we wanted to, you know, focus on what was achievable. So what we chose five responsive projects, and then we developed a list of implementation steps. And those, that list of implementation steps, you guys have the document on the last page, there's several different items in there that we would like to, you know, get your input on, working partnership and the teams moving forward to facilitate different steps to the economic development commission for me and in conjunction with planning zoning mission. And the end result being a, you know, easy, seamless, smooth process for moving forward. So one of the key issues here is the success here will hinge almost completely on attracting private development dollars. There's no, there's no capital, but will be, there'll be state funds or town funds or anything like that. So those things are done in larger cities, not here. So it's, we would have to have almost a hundred percent development from private capital, private investment capital. So what we did is we engaged a consultant, strategy five, that was Ernie. And the methodology that he implemented and along with the commission was we did preliminary research, we did land use analysis, market analysis, we did public outreach, we formulated concept development projects or conceptual development projects. And then we did economic and fiscal analysis, looked at funding strategies, and implementation plan stretches that just mentioned, which is the last page of this document. And these findings and recommendations are based on data from various sources in Willington, state agencies, economic agencies, and also outreach to town leaders, we had fifty interviews, some of you may have participated in that, and ranging from the selectmen to, you know, other former selectmen, different folks in town, good people on the finance board. And so that was our fifty stakeholders, and you also interviewed some landlords as well. And we also, lastly, we did an open house penned by about twenty-five or thirty-five people, maybe around in there at the library, I don't remember the exact date of that, I think it was last fall, I'm not quite sure, September, yeah. So we had pretty good participation, and we took all this together as input. This isn't just done in the vacuum, tried to reach out and get as much information from diverse sources as we could to develop a fair approach to and a well-developed approach to economic development and a plan moving forward. So I guess I'll hand it off to you to go over the, the, is that all right, Bill? That works, you know, the situation, I'll see.
Uh, Bill Rankin, I've been in town for forty years. Pretty much all my kids here. Married forty-eight years tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow. Thank you, and probably volunteering for thirty of those forty years. The kids were young, you know, when I was over baseball, soccer, everything. The previous years before the Economic Development Commission, I was on the board of finance. As Matt said, the success hinges on attracting significant investment from private sources, capital. And of course, having done that myself, if developed properties in Memphis, Tennessee, Chicago, Illinois, Auburn, Massachusetts, and Carney, New Jersey, a lot of risk involved. Bringing bringing good intentions and money to the technical making, that will work. Willington's current financial situation necessitates exploring, obviously, new revenue sources. This strategic plan aims to address this by attracting private investment and fostering business development to increase the tax base and support our town's financial sustainability. The existing town budget for twenty-four, twenty-five projects, total expenditure of about twenty-one point five million supported by tax revenues of approximately seventeen point two million. The tax rate for real personal property, bill rate thirty-three point eight nine for one thousand dollars of taxable value. That is a twenty-five percent increase first two thousand thirteen. The strategic plan recognizes our need to balance community values and a desire to maintain the town's rural character with operational realities and the pursuit of our economic growth. There's a table here that shows from two thousand thirteen to two thousand and twenty-four, the landless totals and the bill rate. I won't go into that right now, if you see that yourself.
You don't want me to bring it up?
No, I didn't know if you were.
You know, I can, it's got, got queued up if you want to.
Yeah, if you got it there. Tell the story.
That's much better.
Like I said earlier, that's a twenty-five percent increase in the mill rate in the past ten years. It's based on our last referendum in regards to the tactic and the mill rates were trading water. The town of Willington encompasses about thirty-three square miles, twenty-one thousand plus acres of land. Strategically located in the northeast Connecticut area, watered by several neighboring towns benefiting from its proximity to the I eighty-four corridor. Major transportation artery connecting greater Hartford to the west, Worcester and Bosley to the east, and a commercial rail line. Willington also benefits from its proximal relationship with the University of Connecticut as well as eastern as well as regional, commercial, and residential activity. Demographically, Willington has a relatively small population, approximately fifty-five hundred people residing in about eight-six hundred dwellings. And greater than, this is from the last census, that we took, greater than fifty percent of those twenty-six hundred household dwellings are occupied by renters, which is a concern. The estimated median household income is about eighty-eight thousand, resulting in total expenditure for town population of approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars annually. The poverty rate in Willington has gone from thirteen point six percent in twenty twenty to fifteen percent in twenty twenty-five. However, the town has experienced a very slow decline in population over the past decade.
Yeah, so I mean, that the poverty rate thing, others have pointed out that, hey, listen, we have a lot of students in our town, and that, that may be boosting up because those folks don't earn a lot of money, their households, and they don't earn a lot of money, so that could be impacting our poverty rate. So we are, we are seeing, seeing a decline in population, and we're, we're just like every other town and every other city, and I'm a city, but every other town. You know, in rural areas, we're, we're losing population, we're stagnant on, on growth, you know, expenses are, are, are building. And based on what, what happened in our recent referendums, the appetite for, you know, raising revenue to pay our, our bills from, you know, further residential tax increases is limited. I'm not gonna say bad or anything like that, it's just limited, so. Yeah, the next section here had a little section, a little discussion about the businesses that are already in town. I think you guys already know that, so I'll skip over that if it's okay with you. We have travel.
Over fifty interviews that matched and talked that we conducted with landowners and stakeholders and town officials. We also talked, let's say, at least twenty businesses, and just to give them good feedback from it, sorry.
No, it's true, yeah, you did a lot. So so there's a relatively scarcity of land here in Willington, I think it's about thirty-three square miles. And if I'm not mistaken, you guys probably know better than I do, but, but almost all of that is, is owned by, by default residential. Commercial is fairly small, and I don't think that's maybe five percent, I'm not quite sure. So between eighty and ninety percent of Wellington is residentially owned, eighty-five, eighty to eighty-five, eighty to ninety percent is commercial. So, and there's been some resistance to large-scale commercial development, and that's the, that's the big warehouse project through the store town referendum. Obviously, that was not appropriate for the town of, town of Wellington, and so in that spot, so. And then we can go on to the advantages here, we let it go over, Phil, but we have several different advantages, mostly having to do with proximity to, to, to eighty-four, proximity to University of Connecticut, and then a rail system running right through town, so a lot of transportation, if you will. And then our, our natural resources as well. Did I miss any? I think I covered it all.
I'm gonna jump into that now.
Yeah.
As Matt said, we, we possess some competitive advantages with the I eighty-four freeway, the truck stops are even idea of the traffic there, I'm in the business of transportation, I'm a warehouse and distribution guy, rail guy. I am the New England Central Railroad's, I was, I sold a business in two thousand eighteen, a mortgage customer. And that railroad there is owned by JSC in Wyoming, which owned a hundred and five short lines in North America. The concept that worked, we were bringing down Canadian pulp, aluminum, paper, a lot of paper, still bringing down a lot of paper, one from newsprint. We have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand tons of newsprint off Palmer, Mass. in two thousand eight, this year we're gonna be about thirty thousand. But packaging, medium board, Amazon delivering to your front porch, taking that business, that's what these people who wanted with the one-point-four-million big box distribution center up there is to serve that mentality, because the tipping point that's happening right now is people want everything delivered to their house, they don't want to shop. Just forget lease, but, but it also, the Amazon model works, it lowers the cost for the retail that's to sell as opposed to having a hall, employees and cam chargers, if that's what you're saying. So we're, we're in a situation here, we talked to Phil Desiato, Wound Pit down there off of thirty-two. And he was very interested in talking with us, and about it, I was doing it with him myself about six months into the project, he went sideways on us, and he sold the business. And right now, it's owned by, owned by a firm, it's F and F. They're out of Cheshire, I met the family that runs it, sharp people. And she's interested, and it's on the backside of him, them finishing what they use that material for. And she said we would be interested in talking about developing. I don't think it's a distribution center for rail, just based on the access of thirty-two, but the, the rail does run right through that property. But from the standpoint of truck traffic and climbing out of a hill, by the time it just went work with trucks. But I do think it's, it's, it's an area that could be used for a industrial park, small industrial park, just, I'm just rambling here. But there, there is some, but there, there is some interest. I probably just said everything I wanted to say.
So our consultant and the economic bill admission came up with five different market sectors that we thought was appropriate to concentrate on. Is there not demand for these kinds of, of facilities and projects? And they're, they seem appropriate for our town, our people, our residents. And for several of these, that's five developed what he called conceptual development plans or, or write-ups, if you will. And so the first one is, is life sciences, and that one includes medical offices, urgent care facilities, life science startups, that kind of thing, laboratories. And we developed a, what he calls a prototypical life sciences cluster concept development plan. It provides us world information that we can use to develop a case study and put on, put out there, and we can now can say to, to developers, listen, we've thought about this, this is about what it would be, this is about what, what the size would be, that your, your, your partners here in Wellington would be interested in possibly working on something like this. You know, so then the next one would be manufacturing, this, this involves advanced manufacturing, and that would offer development opportunities as well. So, and again, we have Ernie, you've established by develop a, a prototypical manufacturing kind of, of write-up, if you will, that we can use to help explain and demonstrate Wellington's willingness to enter into these kinds of developments. And I think you're gonna take the next one, which is hospitality lodging.
As Matt said, we came up, it was, it was ten. Total ten areas that we were discussing would be with Ernie, and we felt, given that it was only four or five of us, maybe, trying to tackle something that big, we'd be better off assuming. As I said the other night in our meeting, I, I don't see this buried fruit for the town from a tax standpoint, for two to three years, but they, we actually kick it off. And that's just the reality of it. And so we narrowed the scope down to better handle not only the work we need to find an interest, but actually landing a, landing a fish, so to speak. So hospitality lodging and tourism, it is, it is underserved in the area today. Ernie, who was our consultant, was quick to say that it was too expensive to stay up in Yukon, and he didn't want to stay with the truck stop. So we, we had, we had living proof from Ernie. But again, I think some of the things on, on the hospitality lodging and tourism is some, some of the air, some of the roadblocks that we have, is how big can it be given water, septic systems, and knowing hotels and competition of hotels? I think, I think that would be a tough one, bring bear, but it's definitely worth looking at. Agriculture, Willington is the home of the small-scale farming in many areas, this, this has a lot of interest in town. Our farmers have expressed an interest in EDC facilitating growth in the farming sector and acting as an information resource for town services and support. And then when I hit on earlier, exploring opportunities of mobility and distribution. And what I did, on the concept of more package delivery, is they not only like to have access to major cities, they also like to be in the central part of where that access is. And we're, we're really right in the middle of Boston Albany, Providence, Hawthorne, and that's why RPS, who fought to get in town for years, now it's FedEx, is here for that simple reason with regards to logistics and efficiency.
I can add something, when we narrowed it down to these five too, it wasn't that these are the five that we just said these are gonna fit best. We really tried to think about what's gonna be the most sustainable and have the most vitality to continue on that would not only serve the town and potentially grow further, but something that's not just gonna fade out in a couple of years. And certain other businesses and things we're looking at might be around for a little bit, but if the market changed, and all of a sudden they decide to leave or dries up, then that's something that's gone. So that's why we tried to kind of come down to these five that could sustain and still flourish, you know, well into the future to benefit everybody.
So, yeah, go ahead. You know, you've got mobility and, you know, now, so we'll skip over these action steps, and if you guys could all turn to the latter page, it has paths on there. So it's just kind of like our implementation thing, that's the thing about consultants is they, they tell you what you already know, and then they don't do any work. Well, they, this guy told us what we already know, and then did a lot of work, and then helped us develop an approach here in terms of what we're actually going to try and do and accomplish. So our plan is to present this to you tonight, and then, and then more to finance, and then to the town as a whole, and gather more input from town people. So that'll be happening in the fall, this fall coming up. And then we would like to, you know, in certain areas here, enlist to support and the partnership with planning and zoning in different efforts to promote economic development in our town. First one is to revisit those SBZ regulations and procedures, and we would like to try and probably do that in the fall, excuse me, winter of twenty-five, twenty-six. Thinking about that, I know it's, it's something that was useful and helpful in, in promoting, you know, business grandest growth. I think it's unfortunate that the first time it was tried, it was tried with a project that was very, very, very large. So if you'd like to consider possibly revisiting that as a way to, you know, sort of ease and make, you know, it's easier for our private partners to consider locating in Willington and doing projects in Willington. We have a very small commercial bakery, and it's already zoned. So that, that SDZ might be something we can take a look at and think about. You guys have any reaction to that, that kind of thing?
At the SDZ zone in particular?
Yeah.
I thought the SDZ zone was a fine thing, but it worked out well. We had one voice in town that was quite vocal against it.
Yeah.
I didn't agree with that assessment, but one thing I do want to point out that when you mentioned the warehouse, you said it was defeated by referendum, it was, it wasn't, it was, there was no referendum on that. That's all right, that's just for clarification, I like to get accuracy on these things, so. Do they go in the minutes and then say, what was the referendum? It was actually just this commission that, that declined out.
There's not referendums of private land, things that's not a way that you can work.
Well, you can tell with the economic.
That's fine, just, just, yeah, I thought the SDZ zone, I thought that process was excellent, we got a lot more information early.
Yeah.
Far more than we do, very, in a different vehicle than standard application.
Yeah.
I mean, that company spent almost a million dollars developing that plan.
Really?
About eight-hundred thousand dollars. That's how much they invested just to get a know, which is pretty significant.
It is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but would it have been higher without the SDZ, is that right?
Oh, I don't know, it would have been different, yeah.
I would have facilitated the town of Willington getting into court if we did have the SDZ, and they had to probably do a full development of the site. I think it would have been a lot harder for them to walk away and say, oh, we're good.
Yeah.
But by allowing them to come in with that sixty or seventy percent.
I think it was thirty, I think it was thirty percent, thirty percent planned.
Development as opposed to.
Regular applications, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. So, you know, in, in a way, the SDZ, yeah, it, it did what it's supposed to do. It gave them an opportunity to present to town, saw the overall plan. The challenging thing there, it's such a large project, is trying to, I felt on our end, was trying to facilitate the proper questions to ask them. They're coming in, oh, we're, we're, you know, this is a great project for you because, well, they build and leave, they're absentee landlords, and we're the ones that have to live with what they leave behind. And if you like it or not, it's there. So I think it's very important if we revisit the SDZ to kind of boil it down a little bit more, so there's better understanding. And I think what, if, if we learned anything from using the SDZ, it was, okay, you bring something into creation, and then it sounds good on paper, but in practice, you know, it's one of those things, maybe the second or third time through, you better understand what you've really created.
Sure.
So I think we have the opportunity to look back and say, well, th- these are the issues that were brought forward with it. It's still a good model to allow companies to come in on the cheaper end of a hundred percent development. And when you're talking large projects like. And when you're talking large projects like we're talking, not huge, but large. Uh, they invest an awful lot of money.
Yeah.
And if you don't do things in a certain way, it's. I think one of the things that people forget about is that all this is happening on private property usually. Well, those people are just like you and I, they pay taxes, they have their interests. And they're trying to utilize the property as they see they'd like to in their best interest, which is their right. If you deny somebody enough times, guess where they're going? They're getting themselves a lawyer and they're going to court. So with this S D Z, I thinks it, I think it gives the town. It gives the landowner and the developer.
Yeah.
Person.
All three.
All three, a better view and a better back and forth coordination. And conversation about what's gonna happen.
It also gets you in the public hearings, you know, without them spending too much at that point.
Right.
And I think that's, you know, that's there's more dying when we were in this public hearings, you know, that particularly fragile overwhelmingly opposed.
Right.
For several public nights.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's it's it needs to be revisited.
I I think it's a good idea at the S D Z and I'm with you, we should take another look at it, want to make some improvements, sure.
Yeah.
So, but the process worked.
It did, it did. There was enough information to make an informed decision.
Yeah. Sort of eases in in for the for the for the applicant, because um, spending quite as much money upfront, although. And, yeah, as he said, it's still a substantial significant. Um, and it provides us with enough information.
You know, it's a lot of money, Andy, but it's not a lot of money based on what they were gonna spend.
Correct, that's correct.
You have to do it all.
Absolutely. There wasn't a reasonable amount, just a lot of money.
Yeah.
It probably it wasn't even extraordinary, it was just.
So we were looking at that in the in the winter of twenty five, twenty six. Next thing we'd like to consider, and this was um, at the at the suggestion of the um. Both our consultant and um, the conservation commission was um, working with um. Our agriculture community here in town. Um, so this would be developing listed agricultural properties and businesses, we would do that. And then we would do some outreach after that and try to help facilitate um, growth or. Enhanced efficiencies in in the agricultural community here in in Wellington. Um, the couple of different uh, folks in this area have expressed interest in uh, using, asking the E D C to. Help us to take information sharing, information gathering, um, and discussions amongst the folks in this in this group. Um, so that would be, um, uh, that would be spring of twenty twenty six. And then in the winter of twenty five, twenty six, we'd like to develop a list of regional brokers. This would be simply, we're breaking this down in discreet little pieces here, um, as you can see, one involved list of brokers. Um, and um, that's the first step, um, and and then trying to do some outreach from there. So. And then we do outreach and conversation with brokers, you've done this kind of work, Bill, right?
Well, we were talking the other night about how these brokers. Get attracted to a development or to a town and and a lot of it has to do with filling out a sheet showing. What 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 exactly.
We were calling it a sell sheet for.
Because I think right now, there is. The uh, we're not open for business, you know, is out there right now. And and the brokers will obviously come in looking to see exactly what town has to offer. Or the stakeholders have to offer, you can cover an idea tonight.
Well, maybe, uh, you know, answer it a different way. One of the things that happens when people are interested in a property and it could be an acre, it could be three hundred acres. They come in and they wanna meet with our office and they have this idea and they're kicking it around and they want me to tell them what I think is gonna happen. We come in and we propose this and we wanna do this, we wanna do that, what do you think would happen? What do you think the commission would be receptive to that? What do you think there'd be concerns? What about the public? Are there any people you need to talk to? They they want me to give them this secret ingredient that I they think I have. Um, and so really what that is, is they're trying to find the shortest distance between where they are and getting what they want accomplished. And I think what we're talking about is trying to really define what those items are. So that when the the broker that, you know, a lot of them represent users. Um, you know, I I talked to somebody that that does all the work for Stanley Black and Decker, there's somebody else that does, you know, all the. Same folks that do the Dollar General, they do Jersey Mikes, they do rally auto parts, they do those three. So they build, you know, around. So I think if we do a lot of these things, in my mind at least, we're closing that gap. And we're gonna refine the regulatory side so that it's much more clear what. Would be acceptable or is is as, you know, close to acceptable as we can get at the front end of the process. So that they have this great sense of momentum with whatever they're trying to produce when they read these documents. Rather than, oh, it's in the regs, but it's a special permit and you gotta do a zone change. And you have to notify everybody within ten miles of the property and you have to refer to this group and to that group. And yes, we've had several denials about, you know. I think it creates a more cohesive conversation when it feels like we know what we run, rather than throwing it all in there and saying, try your hand at the special permit.
Well, one 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 of the things I think that really needs to predate all of this. Where are the landing sites in Wellington that everybody's talking about? I mean, I've talked to small business owners that have wanted to bring businesses into town the past. Ten, twelve years. And they said, all we're looking for to come to Wellington to put up our building, I have eight, nine employees. Is a place to build. He says, tell me where Wellington has some landing spots for us. Now we're talking larger developments and we'd still like to have smaller developments. I'm sure that's the kind of the conversation in town, well, what kind of small business can we attract? Where, when are we gonna identify the landing sites? Where are those spots?
That's a great question. Um, we have landowners in town. Who have properties that right now would go on residential, they might be interested. Um. We have also a base, uh, one of the businesses that I interviewed that we were developing was County Line Sept. They had just moved it down. Have been there maybe five or six months. And he was, he said, I moved in, I moved into this town because, A, from the standpoint of no raise. Practice, it was, it was like a hand, he said, but I'm centrally located. And I've got access to go east, west, north and south. I've got a little laid out area for my material and it's right next to a bus company, so nobody's gonna raise a stakeholder, I got something outside.
You know why he came? He had a landing spot, didn't he?
But that was a body, what was that before?
The body shop.
The body shop.
Yeah, he had a landing spot, go down, go down four lines on the page right there.
Four four lines, and this is outreach to owners of industrial property, so we're gonna be identifying owners of industrial properties. And we're reaching out to these guys, interviewing them, talking to them, understanding what their needs are. Getting an understanding of what the site is, um, and then, um, so that and then compiling those.
Well, at some point, you're gonna have to have a proactive approach to these, having some of these landowners come in and ask for a zoning change.
Yeah.
So you're not looking at.
Yeah, we know, we know something's already gonna happen, you know, the interest, do it, do it for you.
Right, I mean, you know, it's like, okay, do an industrial park, well. You wait until they plan the industrial park or do you find the fifty, seventy, five hundred acres? That you'd like to have the industrial park and try to get the the change. So that it can get divvied up and.
It's not in the landowner's interest to do that though, because their taxes are higher. So if you get a hundred acres and you put it into commercial zone, now you're gonna pay just hoping somebody might buy it. Or what have to, we're coming up a trouble in West Wellington, the kind of commercial, now we just won't do it anymore, because it's.
That's right.
Even if you had any interest in using the T I F. Um, incentives, you should know what kind of properties you're looking at before you, you know, can even bring that into play.
I admit, I'm not just talking my experience. All three, all the three cities that I did business in, Palmer being the nicest one with regards to T I F. But Chicago as well as Memphis, there was a T I F involved, because. As an investor, who's willing to take on the risk, do the work. You you come with the need because you've identified another person's need in logistics and you have a timeframe. To get it, because the need the need may disappear or someone else might, competition might get it. And so, you know, you you're really under under the gun to get these things done in a timely fashion. Um, and that's why sometimes you hire a marketing firm like the landlord, the one point seven million dollar developer did. To kind of get a feel for. What's going on in town, you know, it was a very smart move. So, you know, you look at the criteria of this town and I I drive by it, used to drive by it every morning going up thirty two in Palm. You look at that Stafford Industrial Park, it it's, it's not an eyesore, it's far enough in the back, it's thriving. You know, and and it's a bunch of small businesses and we have a bunch of small businesses in town. We got septic people, we got contractors, we got, you know, who who develops it? No, you've got some roadblocks because they don't have water, we don't have sewer. And these are, these are speed bumps that have to go into the risk analysis associated with how much money do I have to put in the ground? And you know, all these things have to be considered. As we go, as we go down, and what I learned about, I'm sure with Mike's own. We have a better feel for what we need to learn. It's, but it's worth, it's it's definitely, we have no, there's no choice.
Oh, no.
We don't have choice. We've got, we've gotta bring more tax revenue to the town. Because, you know, the cost of living keeps going up, not only are we overspending, it's just the natural progression of it's getting more expensive. To do whatever they have to do to love this town, I get. What's the commission's thought and what gets you the most bang for the buck with taxes? Because a bunch of small businesses isn't gonna get you there as quick as like one.
Yeah, essentially.
It's nice commercial development.
Essentially three levels and.
Yeah.
I'm sure others can chime in as well, but we we can do one big massive project, well, that's probably not gonna work given our past experience. Maybe not, don't know, then we can do uh, three, you know, moderate sized projects, several of which. Were sort of described in in this executive summary document, you do a, you do a hospitality, you do a light manufacturing. You do one other project, three things together, get you, get you somewhere. What we can't do is the town, I believe, in the long term is just sit and wait and not do anything. So that means being proactive in terms of demonstrating to the business community. That Wellington um, has taken steps and is moving in the right direction. And there's a couple of these, there's some of these items that we've been talking about which help demonstrate that. So that's my my opinion anyway.
Oh, I think, I think the town of Wellington has waited. And waited and waited, and that's why we're in the situation that we're in.
Yeah.
And we can't afford to keep waiting.
And and let's and let's let's be honest here as well, I mean, we don't want to to, you know, damage our town. Or have a huge, you know, monstrosity that no one wants and we don't wanna do that. But but what we do need is we do need smart, responsible development in the commercial. That honors our town and our rural character, um, and also balances all that. We need and we have a need for revenue growth in our town, so. Um, I I can, I can go through some of those steps here, I mean, they're pretty straightforward. It's, I mean, but um, we wanna try and um, place a couple of these um, sites on. Uh, advanced C T, the database, I run out of, I think Rocky Hill. And there, it's a group that's associated with the Department of Economic and Community Development, um. And um, so they have database there, it's like a loop net, except for just for Connecticut, uh, large sites. Um, then, um, you also want to, um, as I indicated, the outreach and discussions with industrial, uh. And you know, commercial property owners and then large trapped owners that could be um, sub- the subject of S D Zs. Um, and then, uh, then we wanted to also look at, um. Doing a little legwork on on making our E D C and our town government look a little more like we're open for business. That means updating our business profiles, updating our directories, updating our look a little bit. I mean, all that'll take place in the next, um, you know, fall or winter, um, of twenty twenty five, twenty six. And then, um, that next thing we'll do is own the regula- uh, regulations for business development. Well, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not an expert at this, um, but. Um, I know that our zoning regulations are probably fairly old. And there may be areas, um, that given the wisdom and and the expertise that this group has, that you may be able to go, okay. Here's some things that we that we should look at streamlining or we should look at um, improving or evolving. I think that economic development commission could help along that way in making those kinds of recommendations, so. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, the the permitting process and the application itself. It is something that you want to be understandable. You also wanted to have a life cycle, because again. When these, when these interests hit, they're on a a timeline, you know, they they they. And and part of that, again, especially when they actually don't understand the science of water tables. Septic systems. And lived in an apartment complex up in Syracuse for about six months and they shared a co- a common septic tank. And it was a nightmare, I gotta tell you, because some people understood it, some people didn't understand it, what it actually was. So there's just, there's just an awful lot that. And where do you start? And we talked about this the other night, the. By identifying some property that can be developed for a landing zone. And the best way to find out, I was to talk to some of the landowners in town to see what their interests are. And and I get a better feel for that. And then they may sell it to a developer as opposed to spending the money themselves.
Well, I think that's important. I think when you were speaking the other night about the develop, some of the development that occurred in Palmer. It was an individual that had property there and he says, well, the next step that I need to do is start developing my property. So, you know, at some point, you gotta get in some of the landowners heads and understand what their vision is as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, what 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 they want out of the.
Yeah.
Experience, you know, if it's someone who's been in town for forty years and had a farm out there and he and she just say, we're getting ready to retire. We're not interested in in this, um, they would be a candidate to sell it to a developer. And then we have to work on getting development interest.
Mm-hmm.
Associated that we are, the town is interested in growing, we are in town that's interested in talking to you about development. Within the walls that we built, but they came to restricted walls, you know. And that's that's, that's not easy, it's not an easy process, not at all, identifying property. And then getting an idea of how we can. Get the private capital to put into that. That's a lot of risk on someone's part, a lot of risk.
That's why there's some successful businessmen and some non-successful businessmen.
It was easier in Chicago, I just had to use Mayor Deli's daughter's law firm.
One of the most important points are that I think is in the full strategic plans. So what you have is the executive summary, the slides that I've been showing are just the executive side broken down. But there is a full ninety page, uh, you know, strategic plan. Um, is that the town needs, you know, and yes, there's inflation and you know, some mill rate tweaks. And there's, there's all that granular stuff, you know, I'm not a mathematician, but the round numbers are eighty eight million dollars in investment. Translates to about two and a half million dollars of revenue added to the grant list. So, you know, you you need someone that's gonna be committing a lot. And that's kind of plays into the discussion that we had at E D C about. You you know, do the sort of that Goldilocks approach to how you actually get there. If the town wants that three million dollars to the rep, to the to the general fund, you need a hundred million dollars in investment. You could do a hundred properties at a million dollars each, the town doesn't have a hundred properties. Um, or, you know, you can start chipping away at that and looking at what that potential is. But it becomes a very long road if you're trying to use the existing sort of universe, because it's very small. Um, but it it is a lot of money that that someone needs to be able.
Um, but it, it is a lot of money that, that someone needs to be able to. Uh, to Bill's point, throw it, throw into the ground to be able to see anything actually hit that ground.
Well, and I, I think. I've, I've read the entire report several times and. The, it's, it's important to get the basis out there, but my takeaway from reading that. The challenging point of this economic development study is. Trying to get Wellington's pieces to work together. What I'm saying is this group and your group. Can't just meet once a year and say, oh yeah, we've got this covered. There's gotta be more conversation. It's gotta be a unified move. To do something in town. Because if it's not, and maybe one of the things that needs to be done is getting somebody full time in town. On the website. So if the website is updated constantly, it has a uniformity to it. And it makes Wellington look more professional. That, that's what we're, I think that's what you're trying to talk about here.
Yeah, there's, there's actually steps in here regarding um. How we're gonna be updating um the different, you know, materials that we have um and the look, the old stuff like that, so.
And, and that's a challenge, yeah. That's a challenge in town every year.
Well, to your point you made earlier about. Not on, not even on open cooperation, but we were sitting on. And at our E D C meeting the other night, prior to it, I was on the website looking at. A Fairview Strategy. Uh, assignment that the E D C ten years ago. Put together an economic development strategy for the town of Wellington. And if you read it. And if you read R ninety page, it says the same exact thing. With regards to.
Interdevelopment.
What, what areas?
There they are.
Eighty four access, Yukon.
It's rail.
It, it, it says almost the exact same thing. And the resistance, as Bob said earlier, from the town about wanting. To do a project, like the tax base, for a tax base. You know, I, I like, I've been pushing for it. Everybody knows there are all the readings that we have, is I had, and we had a chance the other day when Peter came to the meeting, I said, Pete, now I can ask you. I would love to have a five year pro forma. Based on the town's historical numbers that we have. That shows what our tax requirements or what our expenses will be five years down the road if we do nothing. Because that, that's a good business tool, you know what I'm saying? Again, it's not. Anything that will be used for local gain, it's just. Where will we be if we don't do anything? And you know, I'd like to have forty pounds on Palmer, somebody that, that needs something and, and that, I don't know about you, but I guess forty pounds just thinking about that. Where, if we, if we don't do anything for the tax base, with a declining population, we had six housing starts in twenty four.
Sounds right.
So we, we have a declining population. And, and that doesn't spell, that, that doesn't spell good at all. That's what I'm saying, we, we need to find some landing places.
So can I ask a quick question? So every, I hear this in meeting after meeting, oh, we have a declining population. Does that correlate with declining households? Because our, our taxes come from our households, our taxes don't come from our population. I, I ride around town, I don't see very many, or maybe one or two abandoned houses. I ride around town and there's new housing starts. So when you say, oh, what was us, our population is going down. Yeah, the kids might be moving away, I know mine did. But our household is still there and we're paying taxes. So sometimes I think we're getting thrown a curve ball when you say, oh, poor us, our declining population, timeout. Let's take a look at this, and when you say declining population, I wanna know how many households we lost. Every year for the past five years.
How would you categorize a dwelling or a household that is not occupied by the owner, but rented to you comes to?
Well, if it's a standalone. House, what we consider a, a residence.
It's paying tax.
Yeah, and they're paying taxes. Our housing stock is stable. We're not talking about apartments, that's, that's a different ballgame. But when, because what everybody's doing, in my opinion. Is that they're saying, oh, we have a declining population, so that means we're getting less taxes. Uh huh, only if our households are going down are we getting less taxes. Now, tell me if I'm wrong.
I think the bigger problem is things get more expensive every year with every new contract with it, you know, schools are more expensive every year, so without the additional revenue. Revenue coming in, you get it out of the homeowners. And that's, that's unacceptable.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I think we can agree they were pretty stagnant on, on population, or not growing.
Well, are we growing our households? So let's not talk about population.
I don't think we're growing household. I think it was six housing starts in two months.
There's a lot more to that conversation because de- declining population is something that we see.
They used to be, you know, as many people.
Yes, oh, less kids, you know, fifty one percent divorce rate, meaning one family now is occupying two dwelling units. But also, our housing stock is aging and the occupants of those houses are also aging. So you have. You know, whether or not they're coming in, you know, declining population, less students, yada, yada, yada. What that really means is people are not reinvesting in the community, you're not replacing people at the rate that you're losing them. Be it through divorce, retirement, moving to a second home, death, whatever it is. And over time, that's not gonna work because right now, sure, they may be absorbed through rentals or. Yeah, one family now wanting to stay in the same school system, so they occupy two homes um because of whatever, but. Over time, that's, that's a challenge, and when your housing stock is aging and you have six houses going up. Um, you know, it, it's hard to sort of maintain that, so. It's okay if you're how you, you have a small uh, but everything's really valuable. But over time, if everything gets older and you're not seeing new stuff, the value that you're trying to get out of that same housing stock. You've got to take more because it's being worth less than less, right? Your house in theory depreciates at, to some point when you get your assessment. If every ten years, when the town goes through a full reval, every single house in town is ten years older. And it's not always the case, though COVID threw everything off, that you're gonna see that appreciate. And so, you know, you're having to pay more simply because your house has gotten older. And so that's a, that's a challenge uh when you're not really replacing some of that and, and there's a lot more to it. The types of units people wanna live in and all that, but it's a very complicated uh.
Well, when we're talking about developments, interesting too is I know when this whole study started. And then, and still in the general report insofar as um, as a sector lab space. Well, if you happen to read the globe on an ongoing basis. Uh, what's the biggest glut in Boston right now? So not only is this all a moving target, as Matt said, trying to find something that's going to last. You also have to be mindful of what's happening up front really fast too. Uh, so you know, yeah, giant warehouses are in now. But if you drive through part of Pennsylvania, New York State, uh. Medium sized and giant warehouses are sitting there idle with uh trees growing up in their parking lots too. Uh, but so there's, there's a, a finite demand and as the. Market keeps shifting, so do the need for those uh facilities to shift also.
Something that I think is interesting and it's a flip on the, the topic that we're, you know, we're talking about here with the, with the industry type, so. Um, Holland has a project next to Big Y, which is a. Two hundred and thirty units being constructed by Santini. Um, and they have a pad site at the Big Y development that was approved, permitted. Ready to go when the development was built, but within the last year Starbucks went through the process of getting everything approved. Submitted drawings, but the whole nine yards, they have a design advisory board. Did that whole rigmarole redesign the building, yada, 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 permits, no construction. Um, and heard maybe a week or two ago that Starbucks has essentially pulled out of all of their. Um, planned construction in sort of north and east of Hartford, Sims Berry. Um, not Ellington, cause that one's done, Taland and someplace else. The plan was saturate the market. Get as much of the business as we can. Push out all the competitors and then rapidly close stores in areas that aren't performing. Cause we can get the efficiency to the point where we can put the money in upfront, as long as we get the business, they'll go another mile to the next store, close this one and move on. Cause and a lot of times that's what we hear, we want a coffee shop, or we want this, or we want that. But I, I guess my really, you know, long story long is even the opposite end of that spectrum from the warehouses, the small. Starbucks is putting in, I don't know, seventeen hundred square foot shops now. Even they're closing them because they're, that's just their model, right? They sort of hurry up, grab it and then leave and, and so. Yeah, we really don't know what they're gonna do, no matter what the use is, and we certainly can't. In my mind at least, be making those decisions because we think something may be the case certain numbers of years from now. We wouldn't have West Farm Mall, Man- Manchester, Buffalo Hills and all those places. Um, but it is very interesting and, and no matter what we do, it might, I spend my life figuring out how not, this to not be the case, but. We will always be behind the private side, right? We will always be behind what the market is saying, what those businesses are trying to do, no matter what we do. We are gonna be reacting to what we're seeing. Um, so I think that's just kind of the, the case that we're in.
And they even went and put in another drive-through coffee restaurant, Vernon, Vernon Circle was. Where the tennis was. Bill and Matt, um, does your consultant have any ideas as far as. Whether or not, whether or not having someone do any kind of grant work. For the town would help, you know, to try to get some additional dollars for.
Sure.
Planning or, or development.
Absolutely, free money, really, free money is always really good. And um, you know, we don't have to pay for it and that's terrific. Uh, there are grants available apparently. Um, and the last item on our, on our list is research and pursuing E C uh grants. Um, we would, we would like to check in with you guys, meet uh quarterly, I think. Um, give you updates on where we are with these different action items as we move forward. Um, you know, and uh, and then we'll, we'll make additions and deletions as we, as we move along.
But I think it seems like you need an army. You know, to really cover as much ground as needs to happen because there's so many things.
Yeah.
That seem to need to happen, seem to need to have happened by now, but. You know, we really haven't ever been able to put the effort forth to get there.
Right.
Like even just, you know, canvassing the town, property owners, finding, you know, likely. Possibilities for growth, it's a big job.
It is, oh, it is. Mike had talked the other night about some property off the eighty four interchange up there, that, that kind of property. Attracts people. With regards to, you know, you mentioned. Out in town, Harrisburg, do you know why that area grew up? To be the mega distribution center for big box stores and food stores.
It's been one in eighty, it's just.
Two hundred miles away from Washington, D C, New York, Boston, all. And a truck driver had put about five hundred miles on a truck on a day. So he has the ability to go from Harrisburg to Staten Island and back to Harrisburg. And tour duty. It was all based, based on supply and what was, and it was, it was driver friendly with regards to. It wasn't driver friendly anymore. Um, well, that, you know, and that, and it lasted fifty years. And, and right now, um, this, the tipping point for what's happening with all these Amazons. That are growing up is uh, people don't wanna shop. They want on their front porch. And malls are going out of business because the, the T J Maxx's and Kohl's make more money selling it than Amazon than they do if they had their own front. Market up there. So it actually lowered, cost a good soul. And took a lot of headaches off the, off their table. But again, that, that scares me too, if you're not paying attention, someone else is stealing their business. Well, I think we just wanted to, to, to tell you all. What we've been thinking. And how we've been approaching this. And we do need to communicate with regards to. How things are rolling out. We do need to approach landowners of town and we, you know, with the, these.
I do need to.
We got, we got a big job ahead.
And then we're gonna demonstrate that two tangible changes that, that Wellington is, is open to. You know, ideas and suggestions um, and if we make these changes, we, we feel a little, we communicate. Um, to the business community, um, and then we're in, be working in the right direction.
So my takeaway from our little conversation here is that uh. You've had two studies done, they both said the same thing. Let's not repeat. Another study, but let's not sit around like we did it after the first one.
Some of the members are at E D C right?
Cheryl, this for Samantha's comment.
I think you've seen Sam here.
By the way, the, the wealth information in this room, I'm sure you could all benefit from uh volunteers, from another volunteer from planning commission two.
I noticed when you were talking about wavefinding, I was wondering if maybe. That could extend to, you know, not just the local usage, but also like internet. And um, trying to get. Kind of have wayfinding to Wellington, you know.
One, one thing we wanna do um is enhance our, our communications. Um, and get our, get our sites listed on a plain C T. Um, that is the major, you know, avenue that they take. Uh, and what, in order to be listed, Mike knows this well, in order to be listed well. Need to have the description um and the parameters um. So, so that, you know, it makes sense, um, it's all lumped up. And then demonstrating some kind of, of, you know, templates in the central development. If you go our, our consultant call, then. Um, say that these things are appropriate for, for our, for our town, so. That makes sense, Bill? Okay, well, thank you very much for knowing, appreciate it. And then ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate the time.
Look forward to working with you in the future.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, more questions.
Well, thanks for coming down.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate it.
I don't know, I, I'm just thinking about capabilities in town. And I know I've talked to you guys at your meetings before. There's a chunk of land that they were gonna build two or three soccer fields on, they still have to throw in the house down.
I remember that.
Uh, it, I, I wonder when something like that is just sitting there. If somehow some part of the town could be touching base with the powers that be. And just say, so now, what's the deal? Or have you considered? Maybe some other options you may have for that property that would be more favorable. Uh, to what your guys' uh goal is with their B D C study? Instead of just, you know. You know, talk about Wellington, just hanging around and doing nothing. Uh, you know, I know we're all volunteers, don't get, don't get me wrong, don't, please don't take anything I say in the wrong context. But, you know, I drive past the place and it's like, you know. It's close to the exit, it's, you know, you tear the house down and all that, if you need. A beach field or something, there's, there's twenty feet of gravel there. Above where the. Old uh cornfield is. Um, what's the possibility with that house next door? If that could be added into that? And all of a sudden, some of these things about wastewater and such. Aren't such a huge barrier. I mean, yeah, it's, it's more than just plugging into the sewer line, but it presents more, more doable option. It presents more, more doable options. Uh, I, I think that's what's gonna have to happen in the future. If we're, if we're really serious about moving this, uh, forward. And five years down the road, people aren't saying, well, you guys are still sitting on it.
You have to take somebody to drive, after drive, someone has to drive it. Um, oh, we, we met with the economic development person over in Berlin. About two years ago, just, just to pick his brain and he was, he was an open book. And they, and he's done a good job, Phil, he's, he's on their payroll. He's part, he's part of.
Yeah.
The, the town and sure he's got a contract that's based not only on salary, but performance.
Yeah, well, it's one of those things that I'm always, I always try to remember that. We're volunteers and how many hats have I got thrown out there on my own? You know, uh, and yeah, sometimes I fall short, oops. But I don't see an awful lot of our community stepping forward to, you know, to, to help out. Uh, they're concerned about their community, but that, you know. I guess they're, they have too many irons in the fire. Or their time is so constrained that they can't manage an, another day out every month. And I don't think it's tough.
Thank you, Bill. And that's, uh, right, well, we'll, we'll close it off, but that's a problem, um, you know, everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Families are all stretched, everybody super dizzy. It isn't like it was in nineteen sixty or seventy, when you had time after work to volunteer for these things, so. I appreciate you guys volunteering as well, so. But thank you very much, appreciate your time and effort here.
Thank you.
No, well. Glad you guys were willing to sit there and take the heat.
We're a little bit off. Thanks, guys, thank you. All right, brings us item number two under new business review and final draft of codification of zoning regulations.
All right, so, um, I'm good, I will go through this quickly. I know there's a lot of pages here, but it's, it's really nothing new. Um, so you know, we've been going through codification, we sat here a couple of meetings and went line by line through all of the. Uh, general codes recommended updates, um. And made selections on how we wanted to revise each of those items. So what's in front of you now is essentially an itemization of all of the amendments that we. Reviewed and then elected to sort of make. So this, this document, uh, reflects each specific section or, or line within and, and what those changes are. Um, we have the same document for inland wetlands and the same document for the town's ordinances. Um, so the town has to go through town meeting to adopt an ordinance to essentially implement the revisions on the ordinance side. And this, the, the next and final step for this group will be to convert this into a formal application. And we'll treat it like a text amendment. Um, but rather than putting a three hundred page redline document together, they've pulled out every single change. Um, and itemized what they are. Again, you know, this process was meant to clarify language, fix inconsistencies. Um, fix amendments and references to incorrect statutes or sections or. Uh, improper use of terms, um. There's no, let's now allow eighty percent coverage in the residential zone instead of forty. We didn't, this process, there are no changes which take a, you know, a dramatic shift of how we're regulating anything. We didn't change the bulk table or uses or any of those things. Um, so I'm giving this to you sort of as that sort of final summary. The next step, unless you feel like you wanna do something else as an interim would be. That basically will create a commission initiated application, refer it out, schedule a public hearing. To formally consider these and then, um. Set an effective date and then the new code in its entirety will be published and available.
Yeah, I think we move forward with that.
There should be, we've spent a lot of time on this stuff.
Yes. So.
This was my second big project.
Yes. And you will see, this does reflect the changes that you made to driveways and the stuff that we just did. Um, that is also in there, we sent that to them, so. You'll send it to Prague, do the whole referral thing. So it'll probably not be until the end of September that we can schedule the hearing.
Um, hearing end of September, I think.
That'll be soon, it's sort of the end of September or the first of October.
Yeah, all right.
So there's no action that you need to take. And, um, and we will obviously create new dot, new zoning regulation books for you all with the new sections, et cetera.
They have got the book. I must try to be still doing books.
Yeah, don't wish to. I can send you a link if it's easier, but we're happy to, yes.
Nice to have it, too.
Yeah.
All right, no one finished business tonight. Grinsta, item G approval of minutes for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. I'm gonna have to stay, cause I wasn't there.
I will accept the.
Well, I'll second.
Anybody else?
Any discussion?
All in favor? Stay, stay, all right. All right. Item H correspondence, Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission referrals.
So I imprint these because they sent the full redlines and there's a lot of, a lot of pages, but they are going through, we're, we're helping them go. Uh, and, and updating their site plan and special permit standards. For what's required as part of the submission of a site plan and, and, um, a special permit and, and the review criteria. Um, so I, I have those, I can send them or folks want them, I can print them at the end of the meeting, but. Cause it's a red line, it was like a hundred pages and I just didn't wanna use three rooms of paper. Um, so I can. Get to copies, email, or print them if anybody has questions. There's also another piece of correspondence which we have, which, which, uh. These came in after, I think we can make it onto the agenda. You may have heard about it by now, um, because the butters to the project got these notices before the town did, but, um. VCP LLC doing business as Verge LLC, Wellington Solar One is, uh, starting the process of. Um, going through the sighting council approval, um, steps for a, um. One point nine seven five megawatt brown mounted solar, solar photovoltaic, uh. Electric generated facility, um, a ten acre portion of a parcel approximately eighteen point four acres in size that forty one dash forty three Losi Road. Um, so you have, I believe, a copy of the packet which shows the approximate layout. Um, and some of the engineering, um. Documents, wetland delineation. So this is more, it's, it's greater than one megawatt, which means it is exempt from all local jurisdiction. They don't, uh, have to do anything other than notify the town of their intent to submit. Um, towns have the legal authority to petition the sighting council for. Uh, certain party status, which gives them a seat at the table. Um, but they are completely exempt from, from all local oversight as essentially a utility. Um, I have added, cause we now essentially have two projects that are pending. We have the battery project and this, which are before the sighting council, the, the battery project has been approved. Um, by the signing council, but obviously it's not under construction. And this one, which is just starting, so if you go to the town's website, I have added a page. Both on the land use page, but also there's a connection from the homepage, which allows you to go to. Uh, the two applications and I've linked the signing council docket, their application materials, you can see where the hearings are being held and. Anybody can participate, you can write in favor and against. Um, so they have checked their statutory box by notifying the town. Um. But, uh, it likely will take some time. Um, you know, this is not something that will happen with site and council in sixty days or something. Um, so if anybody has questions or has trouble finding it or wants more information, let me know. Um. It's all on our website.
There now, like a Christmas tree.
I think it's.
It's all these, yeah.
I mean, it money, who owns it?
So they make money because they, um, yeah. Yes, so they. Right, so that, anything, they are greater than one megawatt, so they're treated like a utility. So this, the, uh, they will, yeah, generate the power and sell it at what, at a defined rate to ever source. They generally have.
Right.
Yep, um, the state has sort of a initiative of generating certain percentage of the energy from clean. Um. So that's, I think, how they get it, I don't know if there's incentives on the actual panels, it's shifted around a lot. Um, the, the battery project makes money by pulling power off the grid. In times where there's more power, low demand, they store it. And then when there's high demand and the price goes up, they sell it back. So they may be, those transactions may be happening dozens of times a day, based on how that works. So this is kind of the other side he's down.
Things could work together, you gotta generate, basically have a power generating. Excuse me, in Wellington and a storage facility in Wellington. That doesn't sound like a, I mean, however you feel about it.
Yeah.
The concept doesn't feel like a bad thing for the town.
Yeah, it's.
We get the juice first, maybe.
It's like, at this point, it feels like it's like Bitcoin, it's all invisible, right? So, so like some of the solar projects that are in East Windsor, they're selling a lot of their power to Maine. Hmm, because it's, it's not like, okay, we'll put it right back into the grid and so the person that's in that first house is gonna get. It's not, you know. Buying and selling and it's very.
Very complicated.
But it is. Um, they are, at least for the time being, not, they're not tax exempt, they're not exempt from all environmental standards. So it's just that they go through the state and look at town.
So I'd imagine every source will be upgrading their lines and such up to that area to. Be able to receive that, uh, power.
Yeah, there, there was some work kind of done. Uh, there were some upgrades in Stafford and there's a substation there that I guess is being decommissioned, so I think they've been doing upgrades to plan for that. Um, there's, there's pretty good power in that area because I. You know, between some of the worship businesses and other things, I think. There's not a capacity issue, but they really. More, maybe a little bit more on the battery side, but they, they don't wanna have these things in a place where the grid is always jammed with demand. You need to be in a place where there's a little bit of space and so putting in this in the middle of South Windsor or something where there's just constant demand. I think creates more volatility, so, so. I think that's why a lot of these things you'll find elsewhere, aside from fact that land is cheaper, but. Um, so this is, this is literally all we have, we have not had any. Any digital or verbal conversations with anybody associated, I don't know anything more than this, but. If anybody has, wants more information or has trouble finding links on the website or, or whatever, um, let me know. And if we get anything more, we'll, we'll certainly let you know.
I am, I, public participation, right, it's not listed on the agenda. Any public participation tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you all for serving on this floor. This has been one of the best conversations we've had in Wellington that I've been around for. As far as just all getting together and cooperating and looking at these to. To begin to improve the town. The, the thing that's probably gonna be the hardest is actually gonna be attitude. And that's, that's gotta be upbeat and positive and we're going to do this and nobody down talk it. Um, is what we're gonna have to promote in the town to get any changes to pass. You can question the change, but not the idea of doing anything. You know, um, some people just put it right down, it's not gonna happen, you can't, you can't afford that. And so I was very happy to see everybody get a third class.
What's your name for the record?
I'm Joan Karas, it's fifteen listening.
Thank you. All right, no one online? Public comment, okay. All right, item J, staff report discussion. Number one, informal discussion per CGS, uh, seven dash one five nine B with Christian Vega. Rejoining to three thirty-one and three thirty-five River Road. Mister Vega?
Yes, I'm here.
You're on.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, and my name is Christian Vega, I'm the managing partner of the properties located at three three one and three three five River Road. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight to request feedback and support for the interim use of the properties. Uh, and outline my broader vision, uh, for their redevelopment. About three years ago, I purchased both three, three, five. Uh, about a year and a half ago, I purchased three, three, one. Uh, and they were intently. Um. To be part of a substantial investment in the town. Uh, my goal is to transform these long collected parcels, uh, from ISOs into productive tax generating assets. Um, I want them to contribute to the local economy and the community. Upon acquisition of three, three, one. Um, I had to, uh, bring in troops C during that time of, uh, cleaning out the building, uh, as there was noted drug use. Uh, and, uh, many drug paraphernalia laying around the property. Um, which is documented by troops C during that time. Three, three, five was completely engulfed, overgrowth, uh, debris and deterioration. Um, sure, everyone that passes by Duncan, I've seen, uh, the prior, um, property. The overgrowth is up to the second floor, uh, when I first bought it. Um, however, I am prepared to invest significant capital and rehabilitate and repurpose these properties. But I need decommission support, the interim use, uh, to begin that process. Uh, with regards to three, three, one, I'm requesting permission, uh, to open a real estate office with approximately a thousand square feet on the first floor. Utilize the existing second floor apartment as an accessory, accessory use to the office. This plan is fully compliant with the DC regulations. The interim use only, um, while market the property for future commercial and residential development. Uh, finalize water and septic testing, um, and potentially pursue a variance to establish its final use. I'm spending, uh, substantial money as it is, uh, to turn these properties, uh, around. Uh, but I do need that interim use, uh, to be granted, to begin operations, stabilizing the sites. Uh, as a note to the interim residential use of the second floor apartment in three, three, one. The second floor apartment as existed, um, roughly around May twentieth of nineteen seventy-five. Uh, it was issued a certificate of occupancy, uh, for an apartment above a gun shop. Um, in, I believe, um. Nineteen ninety-seven, a special permit was issued to Repco Design. Uh, for commercial use of the first floor and a caretaker, security guard apartment of the second floor. Um, I am working with a zoning attorney, um, who has advised. That, uh, the restriction limiting the apartment to a caretaker, security guard is quite unlawful. Uh, zoning regulates the use of property and not the identity or class, the occupant. Condition, conditioning residential use unemployment status does violate, in his opinion, uh, state and federal law. Uh, so a special permit ideally should not have been issued in ninety-seven. Um, seeing as though a CEO already established lawful residence. Um, that being said, uh, I am traveling from Shelton. Um, and I'm looking to establish in that use the second floor as an interim apartment use and maintaining the CEO. Uh, for owner occupant, while I work through what will very well, probably, likely be a. Uh, variance coming to you folks on a separate for future date. Um, that being said, these properties are quite restricted. Um, so going in for a zoning variance, um, is probably my best option going forward. Uh, so I am looking for some feedback, uh, today on the interim use. Now, obviously I'll go through the proper steps, uh, hereafter, uh, but I want to get feedback on. How the, uh, planning zoning commission feels on this use.
Mister Vega, what's your vision for final use there for the property?
Um, based on, and I'll, I'll be open and honest for three, three, one, I am restricted, uh, on the lot use. Obviously, everyone who knows this area and I'm only learning of this, uh, as I go through the motions. It seems like three, three, one has existed for over a hundred years, it's had, uh, two annexes built to it, uh, attachment A and B. Um, from a gun shop to, I believe, somewhere in historic records, it was a, originally a mill workshop or a manufacturing facility. Um, it's gone through the motions, it's gone through, uh, ups and downs. Uh, right now, I'm working with, uh, general counsel over Dollar General, the executive vice president. To acquire an easement that would, uh. To acquire an easement that would uh, potentially give me the amount of square footage that I would need. To increase my septic and give me the proper rights to the well that's currently being used as once it was uh, the same parcel. Uh, before it was subdivided, uh, it became Dollar General. That being said, to answer your question, uh, initially and hopefully and uh. Have the proper engineering scoped out for multifamily usage of three, three, one and three, three, five. Uh, again, future use would be the potential of working with a commercial designation office, my GC engineering firm on the first floor. And a residence on the second floor.
I have a question for you. Mr. Astromoff, plot in town. When the hell are you gonna get rid of all those junkers?
Fair enough. Um, to be fair, I have, um, and I have submitted this when I first. Yeah, to, to, to be fair, I've submitted a, I, I've submitted documentation in twenty twenty-two when I first bought three, three, five. Um, the collection of vehicles that I have, the Porsches, the Land Rovers, they are costing me a small fortune to keep. Registered and insured and they have been that way for the last five years. Um, it's a little habit I have, but nonetheless. Um, I've moved a few of them out. I'm selling and giving away some of them. Uh, that being said, it's an old hobby, um, a tinkering hobby from the Navy. And uh, what can I say? I like those cars, but they are registered. They are insured. Um, I will say that on three, three, five, uh, I inherited the RV and as of yesterday, I just found someone to take it. So we are looking to get it out in the next week or two. Um, you know, those, those RVs really aren't worth much. It's from mostly plywood and fiberglass. It was from nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, so it's again, I inherited it. It was part of the property purchase when I got it. Other than that, so I do have a crane on site. Uh, the crane was facilitated to drop off concrete structures. Um, I don't need it anymore. Do you know anyone who wants it? But it does work. Um, it's not used for codeful. Uh, roadway work is just uh, used for proper private property. Um, we used to uh, use to unload concrete structures in some of our civil engineering work uh, at a New York. So. Again, um, I am looking to make the properties compliant. I'm trying to make them look better. Um, trying to get permits to do some structural work and maintain that hundred-year-old three, three, one property. Um, but I need some of this to be cleared up. Now, if I'm uh, an hour and a half away. And I can't establish a residence here, it's gonna be hard for me to do that. And I'm just gonna be fair and open saying that uh, driving two, three hours. Every single day to get that work done is not, it's not uh, healthy for me. Um, that being said, uh, I am willing to make this a priority. Uh, but the priority also needs to be the ability to maintain the residents here. And.
Well, the look of the property isn't healthy for the image of uh, Wellington, Connecticut either. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, say that again?
As is the uh, look of your properties isn't very healthy for the uh, well-being of the town of Wellington either.
Yeah, I, I think I've addressed that by saying, um, looking to get these things cleared up. Um, and also to make the properties look presentable and bring use to them. Um, it's under my belief that this uh, three, three, five property. Um, has been sitting there for twenty years and not one person decided to buy it. Um, I was licking my wounds, losing a battle to purchase a piece of land down the road. Uh, initially, uh, that's an axo ended up buying, uh, come to get some coffee and this abandoned piece of property. Um, which was also taken fit, uh, ticket vested, uh, was just sitting there. So. That being said, um, I understand this is a central point of Connecticut coming off that highway. Uh, it is my intent to make them worthwhile uh, as a consulting engineer. Um, just, I mean, at the point of reference, if you guys, anyone decides to call the Fairfield Buildings Department. Um, I'm a honey and um, the people over there, the chief inspectors there can validate and kind of voucher my uh, process. Uh, we helped a uh, large hundred million dollar investment into Fairfield. Um, on Black Rock Train Station, um, coming to fruition. That was many years of battling, um, which was. Um, incredible because you couldn't fly by this thing outside of Connecticut, but this is all wetlands. Uh, the property got purchased for just over twenty million and they started putting in the first sixteen million dollars into their hundred million dollar redevelopment of this area. Uh, it borders Bridgeport, but it's right off the train station to nineteen Ash Creek Boulevard. And we've successfully um, established seventy-one rental units there. Again, I was a consulting engineer there. Um, so, you know, and then I spearheaded the entire project, soup to nuts. Uh, into our final CEO and we did not fail one inspection, which is really impressive for Fairfield. Um, but that being said. That was working with the conservation to make sure we were compliant and mowing their lawn. Um, I'm looking to also do that here. Um, I came to this town not by, you know, just licking my wounds on losing a piece of property, but my eldest uh, daughter uh, is a Yukon student and she's in her last year now. So, uh, you know, initially I bought the property thinking that we'd be able to establish an apartment on the second floor for one of her. Um, for, you know, for her stay here and obviously that didn't come into fruition and we spent the money to dorm her. Uh, and worked with a local developer to have uh, her stay at one of their units that they just built in stores. So. That was what brought me here. Um, I like the town. Um, you know, I grew up in New York, but I've traveled the world. I've lived in rural North Carolina for several years and. Um, I will say that. Not only do I like the town, but I feel like it's a good fit for me here. Um, I wanna bring my family here. Uh, but first step is making sure that my investments are just not sitting here and uh, making sure that the town can actually see. That uh, these properties are coming to fruition, um, into something better than just an abandoned property for twenty-plus years. And a, with all due respect, uh, from what I know, what seemed to have been a crackdown. Of three, three, one prior to purchasing it, um, which it no longer is. So again, with that respects and to your point, I am looking for these. Um, for the guidance and also for the permission to do so in the interim use while I establish its final use on both properties.
Mike, that, that'll be your quest for him with the Sony.
Um, so. The, he outlined what we have in the file, which was a nineteen seventy-five CO for an apartment. Which was associated with the gun shop.
And this fire has been brought up for years well before.
Right.
Being applied.
So there's a special permit that he referenced in ninety-seven and it taught and we looked at the minutes from that meeting and, and tried to. Kind of understand the building permit for that original apartment just says adding a bathroom to an office or something. It doesn't really reference much, but then the CEO just says apartment. Fast forward to the ninety-seven or whatever the date was and when Repco was in, there's, was a fair amount of discussion during the meeting. About the use of the apartment and sort of a discussion about the purpose. Going back to when the town adopted zoning. Residential uses were never allowed in the DC zone. Um, and so. In reviewing that, it, it at least became clear to me that. This was allowed only because of the concerns related to the business and they were allowing an employee to stay on site for security. Um, there's a, a even, I mean, there's a memo or email or something in the file to between Susan and someone else. In the uh, town hall, but it's not apartment. It's really just a security, sort of a unit for security. Um, and so when this originally started, we were talking about it. I, I told him that the use, it was always connected with that, the use of the apartment, if you want to call it that, was connected to the use of the building. It was, it was a, an accessory used permitted by special permit for that specific purpose. That it wasn't a standalone sort of separate mixed-use building and the design flows that, that the health department have sort of seem to support that. Um, this, the DC zone doesn't allow the, for residential, it's not in there. Um, and so he originally had submitted the text amendment application to allow residential. Um, and then he involved uh, his attorney and we. Looked at the application as submitted and given the time constraints related to reviewing that application. There would have been amendments that needed to have been made and it just didn't work at that timing. So he withdrew. To give him an opportunity to talk about sort of his thoughts for the property tonight. But I, you know, I, I've spoken to his attorney about his, um. Position on special permit and that, that it isn't lawful. Um, I, I don't agree. I don't think it was illegal for the commission to allow a caretaker to live on a property to, to secure a facility.
This one was a gun shop.
And with Repco.
How this tax accessories office look at it?
They, I think they have it in there. I, I don't know. We don't, we don't have floor plans for the second floor of that building.
I'm just curious if they had any other info designation on like, okay, it's based on X and Y and. Therefore, it could give some clarification or something.
There were, there were approvals that also required reviews and inspections by like fire marshal. Because in that, at that point in time, it would have had some oversight and um. I, I don't have anything that shows that any inspections were made, uh, unless they exist, so. Fire marshal has it, but there's not really much there on that. Um, there's a letter from Mister Stewart, who was the two owners ago. Who held the mortgage from the previous person who referenced the apartment being in the building and it wasn't occupied and. Sort of seeking guidance, I think, from Susan, how to get approval of some kind, but nothing was ever pursued. So are, my position to him, Mister Vega, was. I cannot tell you that you can occupy this apartment, which, you know. Well, let's call it a dwelling unit, right? Cause I, I, again, I don't apartment in a caretaker's unit. Because it's not allowed in the regs currently and it wasn't before and the special permit made it clear that it was part of the business that was being conducted there. Um, and there's no permit for any use of the building at this point.
So it almost sounds like it started out as a security office.
It was, yeah, it was, it was referenced for the habit.
Yeah, so it.
It says caretaker slash security guard quarters to be occupied by employee of Repco Designs owner. So that was the, that was the nineteen, whatever, the ninety-seven special permit.
Mike, weren't you just calling it not too long ago, you know, and wanting to know about how special permits and how long and who they last with and where they extend to in future.
So, yes, so special permits run with the land and so. Uh, even though this was issued to Repco Designs, you know, it, it was giving the ability to, in this case. Sell upscale furniture and custom design interiors, et cetera. So the ability to conduct that, that use, you know, unless there's a proceeding use remains with the land. Um, where we disagree is that this, this condition, which allowed for the maintenance of this unit. But only for the purposes of a security guard quarter isn't, isn't lawful. Um. Uh, I don't, it's not a residential dwelling. We're not. I don't see any violation of fair housing laws or anything along those lines because we didn't allow any dwelling in that zone. Since nineteen seventy, when zoning was established. Um, uh, you know. I've had this conversation with other, in other situations with Ken Slater and, you know, his. Uh, position on similar things, not related to this, but just with special permits or this was a, this was an approval, right? It was a conditional approval issued to an applicant. If there's a concern with the condition of approval, the applicant can. Deal with that either during the public hearing or by appealing the approval. Um, but we can't put ourselves in the shoes of people from. Whatever we're talking.
So that it was used for security back then.
Right.
So let's just say like, I'm staying there to keep an eye on my property, keep it secure.
Well, I.
Yeah.
So the, this, the.
Yeah.
And what the position that I think we talked about was, that's exactly the point. It needs to be accessory to the main use of the building. So we're not saying take the whole thing out of, it can't be there, but it has to be accessory and in support of some use there. It can't just be no commercial use on the property and I'm occupying this dwelling because. We can't make anybody put a use there. So if he occupies that user, any person occupies that use based on a representation, what's gonna happen in the future.
And there's no business per se there right now.
And that.
Other than we're using it.
Correct. So if he, if he obtained approval from the commission to use the building. And he asked for permission to conduct this accessory use after lawfully establishing a primary use. I don't, I don't see an issue with that. I think that there's support in the special permit for that. I, that I don't have any concerns with, but we can't occupy a unit that's a caretaker's, whatever. When we have no use, primary use built, because that becomes the only use. And, you know, I, I have had this hammered into my head over the years from all people much smarter than me. Permits are giving people the ability to, it's something they may do. You've given the permission, something, an activity they may conduct. It's not uh, approval for something they must conduct. And so. I can't make him establish a second use there, whether it be a real estate office or. Or, or a custom design interior studio. It needs to function accessory to something. And, and if it, I don't think from a zoning standpoint, based on this special permit, if that were the case, we could tell him no. I think that he would be coming in to do and occupy a caretaker's unit as an accessory use to a lawfully established principal use. Which there's support in the record for having been on site since nineteen seventy-five. I don't see an issue with that, but we're not, that's, that's where there's sort of a.
We're not there yet.
A breakdown in the perspectives of what needs to happen here. Um.
Mister Vega, when did you buy the properties?
I bought uh, three, three, five, I think, uh, twenty twenty-two, just turned up twenty twenty-two. And um, three, three, one uh, was about a year and a half ago. So just turn uh, yeah, just turn about twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. Uh, I just want to interject on uh, the assumptions of the, and again, none of us knew. In nineteen nine, uh, in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five, what was granted, what wasn't granted at that time, because we weren't at that meeting. Um, I will tell you from the layout of the second floor to kind of just shed some light on that. There was a internal staircase that did not meet any code. You had to duck before the last fifteen steps. Uh, otherwise you hit the A-frame of the outside of the building of the ridge beams. Um, that staircase, that L-shaped staircase that brought me to the second floor was accessory to a small room and a bathroom. So if we are looking based on assumptions, because that's what we are doing today, is we're assuming that that. CEO, not a special permit in nineteen seventy-five that was issued to Fred Benton. Um, came with these assumptions. So speculation here is that the seventy-four permit that he pulled. Was for that office in that, for that bathroom on the second floor. Now, there's a separate exterior. Egress and ingress, um, on the backside of the building with, you know, pure clearance, so over seven feet clearance. Up to the second floor directly from the first floor, um, and from an outside exterior deck. And that at a demising wall with a um, fire-rated door that led to that office that I referenced. So from seventy-four to seventy-five, and again, this is an assumption, but. The owner of the property established an office on the second floor because he probably had a, whatever it was, gun shop or tackle and bait store at that time. And he had an office and a bathroom on the second floor. He then probably applied for the rest of the building to have. Bump out the rest of the second floor and use that as an apartment. Um, we don't know because it's such a limited information from the permit he pulled on seventy-four. And the continuation of that same permit, with the same permit number, which having a family in architecture and a firm for over thirty-five years. It is relative to assume, and again, this is an assumption. That that permit was designated for that property or maybe the permit was left open and alterations were made to the permit. Either way, Fred Benton was issued a CEO, which is separate and not the same as a special permit. So I think that's kind of what we're trying to establish today is how you guys feel of a CEO that was issued for that space. Whereas our take and my attorney's take is a special permit should have never been needed for that area since the established residence was already on that floor. Um, and also, you know, I am not looking to live in a, I've got a. Big family and I've got several businesses, not looking to live in a space forever, but I can't be in two places at once. So I am looking to maintain what is already there. By having a place to stay while I fix these units up. I've got thirty employees. I might need them to stay there while they're look over the property and develop it as we go through this process. But none of that happens by staying at the cigarette burnt mattress truck stop, which is at the other side of the town. Which I learned very quickly was not a place you wanted to stay unless you wanted bedbugs. So. Again, this is what we're looking at. It's again, it's in my opinion, in my attorney's opinion, it's been zoning attorney for forty-five years. It is a best guess of what happened from seventy-four to seventy-five. But you can't erase the record. The record shows that a CEO was issued and then ninety-seven, ninety-seven. There was a special permit issued for that use at that time. And we're not kind of arguing back and forth on which is relevant and which isn't, but they aren't one in. And we're not kind of arguing back and forth on which is relevant and which isn't, but they aren't one in the same. Um, and that's clear. I am not looking to live in this space again. For a long time. But I need the space to be approved by the fire department, approved by the building department, be compliant before we move in. And it needs, I need permits to be able to do that. And I also need to go to the process. It's not a quick process. To get the approvals for final use. On the property.
So this is a commercial zone. And you don't allow residents and design commercials out.
Right, so I, yeah, I I I want to say we're not disputing that a C O is issued.
Yeah.
A C O is a document issued by the building official for permission to occupy a structure or portion thereof. What we are disputing is is the. The details surrounding why it came to be and how that area of the building can be used. I sent this to his attorney a couple of days ago. I'm going to read this to you. It's an excerpt from the minutes from November nineteen ninety seven. And um, it says Ralph Tulis asked Susan Jorgensen about the caretaker or security guard. That should be the only person living up there. Our toolist said as a condition, it should say that this shouldn't be a residence and business for the future. Just in case Mr. Repco leaves. Ms. Jorgensen agreed. Susan Jorgensen said, once the building is commercial, it can't be residential and commercial. Um, and she then went on to ask the the um. Sanitarian at the time to then check that. So. Nineteen ninety seven, the person who owned the property sought approval from this commission to do a thing. And the commission said, you can do that thing based on what you've asked for, and these are the conditions by which we're gonna allow you to do it. So. How something was issued prior to nineteen ninety seven. It it at that point. The intent of the owner was to uh, conduct this use in this fashion and they were granted that approval. With these specific conditions and there were others. Um, nineteen seventy five, I, you know, I don't even know. We only had zoning, you know, we're talking, you know, a couple of years maybe. And so. I I think that. This conversation and this sort of circular. Difference of perspectives is what led to the text amendment application that was submitted initially by Mr. Vega that would. That hi- his request was to allow residential in the commercial zone. Um, so. You know, I I think at this point. There's two things that that are kind of in play. One is, I want to, you know, the future use of the property and hi- his intent to make improvements. And conduct, you know, one or more uses on the property and and the other is the um. The position that. Uh, I guess I have taken or I believe the record supports. And so I I had discussed with his attorney that. If Mr. Vega feels that that I am somehow overextending my authority and making those determinations that he could. Present the information to you and uh, seek. Additional clarification as to whether or not. The record supports the finding that I made or not. Uh, he's still free to pursue all of his options, text amendment, zone change. Variances, you know, all those other things, but um, this seems to be the the sticking point of this. Junction.
Correct. I just want to also interject on the reason why we 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 live true and um. You know, we had the guidance to the text amendment, but. After discussing with my attorney, he believes that it is, it goes against Mackenzie law. Uh, asking for, because I am so restricted with the amount of land I have on both these properties. Um, so it would directly, even though we put time into it, you know, we 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 did, you know, proper. And uh, due diligence on on what we were asking for. Uh, it does, it does go against Mackenzie law, so it wasn't something that we could present knowing that. Um, you know, puts us in a position that we might be potentially breaking the law in asking. Uh, for those tax amendments based on the setback requirements and what we don't comply with on on the uh, land. Uh, that being said, uh, our position is to still seek the same usage. But through a variance, uh, which will be presented to the board at a future date.
Law are you referencing that?
Mackenzie law.
Mackenzie law?
Yes.
So I mean, Mackenzie was a case that happened in Connecticut, which is, which is pertains to waivers. We've talked a lot about that. So what? The amendment that he initially proposed essentially allowed the commission to waive. The bulk standard requirements that our property didn't meet. And so when we sat down initially met last week with his attorney. We agreed that the commission can't issue waivers that violates the Mackenzie. Um, Mackenzie versus Monroe. And so.
Correct.
Things were drawn because the commission could not approve something that allowed allowed to grant you.
Thank you.
And this is just an informal discussion. There's no approvals.
Correct.
clarify that.
It seems like they're quite clear in in that exchange between um. Well, the girl and uh, tulis.
Right, it put a lot of exemptions in there on the record, so.
Yeah, and certainly. Fifty years. Approvals done fifty years ago aren't necessarily relevant today. Any news?
Exchange.
Right, right. I mean, especially since it's been, because it never changed, then maybe this could change in fifty years.
Interesting.
Thank you. Do you also have any, any comments you want to make? Any thoughts? Yeah. Back to you later. All right. So many great.
No, no.
So. All right, thank you, Mr. Vega.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, have a good night.
You as well, thank you.
All right, item number two, low stick project update.
I will make this very short and sweet. Um, we are. Sort of in a little bit of a uh, loggerheads with the D O T. Um, we are now in the third division that is doing the review and they have changed their minds on. Uh, one of the components of the the design and now want to be that sort of component of the project to be removed. So we're running this up to flagpole D O T because. It's sort of not our job to determine if different people within D O T are gonna have different positions on the same project over the course of three years. Um, and we don't have a budget to redesign the thing. Um, so. We've reached out to some folks that are maybe a little bit higher up the food chain that maybe can. Distill down what the issues are and I'm waiting to hear back. Assuming we can come to some kind of consensus, then we go on to. It, you know. We're, we're, there's no other design that needs to happen there, so. They have indicated really that they don't like the pedestrian center islands. And the newest issue that they have presented is that the D O T's newest snow plowing fleet includes larger snow plows. Be a concern. Even though this project has been designed to the. The highway manual, you get all the proper length with sightlines and striping. It's. The engineer, engineering and traffic think it's okay. Maintenance now has a problem.
This is the South going to.
Yes.
So if they're gonna, if they're gonna do away with the.
It'll fit.
If they're gonna, if they're gonna do away with the safe. Spots in the middle.
That's what they'd like.
Um, are they gonna lower the speed limit to compensate for that?
Well, I I have mentioned that at several points, is that this would be less of an issue if they hadn't rejected the town's request to reduce speed limits. And I said, you know, you may have concerns, but I I don't believe we have a situation where. Where there's another town in the state that has sort of a village area like we do with a multi tenant mill complex, a church and a school. All of which are located on the opposite side of the street from their primary parking lot. Right? We have people that are crossing the road and and frequently have issues there and. I I don't, you know, we also have summer camp, which crosses river road to walk to the pond from the school. I don't think that situation exists all over the place. And um. So. We're waiting on that, but but that's kind of where things stand is incredibly frustrated. Even Krag is frustrated. Their whole lots of team is like, I thought we had fixed this. Um, and that everything was addressed, so they're scratching their heads, their design reviewers scratching their heads, our engineers scratching his head. Um, and so we reached out to this person at D O T who said that. He has a lot of concerns with uh, the inconsistencies. In the communication. I don't know what that will lead to, but. We just try to keep plugging along.
More confusion.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's sort of crazy that, you know, we get an email with fifteen D O T employees on it and we don't know who actually makes the decision, who works for who. What departments they're in. It's very. You know, we have meetings, it's all online, none of them have cameras on, we don't know, like. So we just, it's it's very hard to figure that out and is this a concern that you have? Are you saying the answer is no unless we make these changes?
It's called fluidity.
Yeah, so. We're calling in a few favors to try to see if we can get a real answer from somebody that is actually in a position to make a decision so that we can. This product can outlet me, I think.
It's been too long for the.
Yeah.
Size of the project.
That is um, all I have.
All right, it's nine thirty P M, media journey.